Okay, I call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Aransas Pass, May 7, 2018 at 6:00 PM. Let's all rise for the invocation of the pledge.
Dear Father, we come before you with grateful hearts. Thank you, my Father, for what you have blessed us with. We thank you, my Father, for our city. I know we have a lot of issues that we have to take care of, a lot of damage from Harvey, my father, but I want to thank you, my father, because of who we have in place, our city manager, his staff, and each department, my father, and their staff. Thank you, my father, for the guidance that you are providing them, and I ask you, my father, to continue to guide them, open doors for the City of Aransas Pass, those doors that agencies coming in and just helping us, my father, to do what we need to do. We ask for your guidance upon us, the City Council, that we do what's right for our residents. Thank you, my father, this we ask in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we're going to go to the Board and Commissioners appointments, and it's, uh, we have certificates of recognition for Dennis Peacock and Ginny McClellan for their service to the Housing Authority of the City of Aransas Pass through March 31st, 2018.
They can't hear you.
Okay, now we go to the discussion of the mayor's appointment of Lupin Torres, Rudy Abrego, and Vicky Torres to serve as board commissioners for a two-year term on the Housing Authority of the City of Aransas Pass, Texas, effective immediately in pursuant to the Texas Local Government Code, Chapter 392. Do you have any discussion? No?
Mayor?
Yes.
Pursuant to Chapter 392 of the Texas Local Government Code, you have full and sole authority to appoint board members to the Housing Authority. There is no action needed by the council, but if any of the council members would like to discuss and let you know their thoughts about your new appointments, sir, they're welcome to do so. If there is no discussion, you may proceed to the next agenda item. Thank you.
I'm good.
You're all good?
Yeah.
I'm all good.
Okay, then we go to the presentation of certificates of appointment swearing in and oath of office for newly appointed officials for the Housing Authority of the City of Aransas Pass, Texas. Mr. Lupin, Rudy, and Vicky. Wrong Torres.
The wrong Torres.
Thank you so much.
Who's going to swear him in?
I, Vicky Torres. I solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office. The duty set the office of housing authority commissioner of the City of Aransas Pass. That I will serve as the third commissioner of the City of Aransas Pass. And will to the best of my ability. To protect and defend. Preserve, protect, and defend. The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
Let's go to the presentation and proclamations swearing in of Roxanne Paez.
Katronio.
Katronio. City Attorney.
I, Roxanne Paez Katronio, I solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office. The duties of the office. Of the city attorney and the city prosecutor for the City of Aransas Pass. Of the state of Texas. And will to the best of my ability to preserve, protect, and defend. Preserve, protect, and defend. The Constitution and the laws of the United States. The Constitution and the laws of the United States. And of this state. And of this state. So help me God. So help me God.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you, Roxanne. Thank you so much.
Okay, now we go to presentation on city prosecutor's safety program.
Mayor and City Council members, it's important as your city prosecutor, mayor and City Council members, it's important as your city prosecutor to be proactive and to assist your chief in making sure that our community is as safe as possible. As your city prosecutor, I have developed a city prosecutor's safety program. You will see that in your book that has been passed out, there are forty to fifty free books that the city prosecutor will be donating to your library. The forty to fifty books will be the same book every month, but a different book, does that make sense?
Uh huh.
Okay, and these are the front covers of those books. They'll be delivered and given out to children at the library for free. Every month they'll bring you one so that you can give your favorite child one as well. Anybody want a free book?
Brenda, you need a book for your grandkids. Brenda McElveen needs a book for your grandkids.
Roxanne, our elementary schools might like these as well, our lower grades. That would be cool. Thank you.
The books are about traffic safety and neighborhood safety.
Very good.
Very nice.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
The City of Aransas Pass is proclaiming, uh, proclamation designating the month of May 2018 as Motorcycle Traffic Safety Awareness Month. So for the whole month, can y'all just keep an eye on all the motorcycle guys around town? Okay. Okay, now we go to Ms. McElveen.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. And you know, the, um, there's a nice new sidewalk leading up to the, the library from the schools, so the kid, uh, that's the plan, so hopefully the, the library will be visited more by the youngsters, the students in our, our community, so thank you for those books. So I'm back again to deliver the audit. You know, we've done, we've done auditing 101, I've told y'all what an audit is, why you have to have an audit and all that, and so I'll save you all that boredom, but really and truly, you know, what, what, what my job is, is to make sure that this, that the financial report of the city is readable and usable by the folks who invest in our city, by the people that buy the bonds, by the, the people that, um, the Samco folks, the guys that, that issue the bonds, and so that's probably the most important, the objective of, of this report, is getting it to those folks so that they can give you a rating on the city's financial condition. What I, what I do is I verify accounts, I make sure that the balances that, um, that are given to me are accurate, I do third-party verifications and that sort of things, I get to turn over rocks, be a, just be a nuisance.
Right, Sam.
Anyway, so, so that's what, that's what an audit is. I think audit is, is kind of a strong word, but it, it's just verifying that, that the, that the financial condition of the city is fairly stated in all material respects. So I'm happy to report to you that your, uh, that my opinion on these financial statements is a, is a clean, unmodified opinion, and your financial statements will, will compare up to any other city and just fine. You know, we got through Harvey, Harvey was a bit of a financial hit on the city, and everybody's, you know, trying to recover, but I think Aransas Pass is very resilient, and nobody, you know, can keep us down, right? So, um, some of the highlights are, uh, of, of this are, you know, the, your debt is being paid down fortunately at, at a rapid rate, so, you know, the, the debt's being paid down, and the cash, your cash position is, is good, your, um, infrastructure is continuing to be rebuilt, I know you've got a lot of projects on hand that are, that are being done, and all of that's being done well, uh, I, I see a lot of progress, I see a lot of, um, good progress, especially under the, under the new, uh, direction of our city manager, I, I find that he's really got a lot of good ideas, and I think what he's done for our city is, is a good thing. The Finance Department, this is Sandra's first full cycle of, of doing the financials, and I have to say that she's the, um, the best finance director that you guys have had in a very long time, and she's, she's competent, and so we're lucky to have her as well. So, you know, I could sit here and, and spread her off numbers all day long and just bore you to death, but I won't do that, so look it over, if you have any questions, everybody knows where my office is, you're welcome to call me, so do you have any questions at this time?
Are there any immediate things that we need to change to make, to make it better?
Any immediate things that we need to change? Not, not immediate things. Uh, we, we had an exit conference today with the city manager and, and the finance director, we went over some housekeeping, but none, none of it was, um, urgent or, or so big that, yeah, so no, it's, it's good, so all of the, the recommendations that I had made in pre, the previous year have all been either started or have been fully implemented, and I had a couple of new, new suggestions this year, so other than that, my job is done.
Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Okay, now we go to the consent agenda. One day I'm going to learn how to say it right, anyway. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of this item unless a council member so requests. Discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately.
I'm making motion that we approve the consent agenda.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I believe we go to Gary now.
Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you very much. Uh, the first item that I have is, um, the, um, consider an act on awarding the request for proposals for disaster recovery consulting services. We had a committee, a review committee, that reviewed the several RFPs that were received on this particular issue. Uh, the purpose of this consulting service, which, uh, will be reimbursable by FEMA, assuming we do everything correctly, and that's something we have to monitor to make sure that happens, uh, the, um, the services will include working with us as we work our way through the FEMA process in getting, uh, different, um, areas that need, uh, financial support from FEMA for repairs and recovery. Uh, this, uh, this organization, H2O, which is known all over the country actually, uh, will help us with that process, will be looking over our shoulders. Uh, Sandy and her team have done a phenomenal job as far as, uh, keeping us in tune with the different steps that are necessary with the FEMA reimbursement program, the recovery program, having, um, H2O work with us to make sure we're doing everything correctly as we begin to get into the, uh, the meat of the process, also as we get ready to go out to bid for improvements, uh, that, uh, we have like sixty projects out there, uh, that's a big, um, uh, it's a big undertaking, uh, to, uh, go out to RFP for all these projects, staff is not equipped to do that, having, having H2O, uh, the winning bid or winning proposal, uh, help us with that will be a significant assistance as far as staff time, again, this is reimbursable. Uh, I believe Eric with H2O is in the, uh, in the audience right now, I'd like to introduce you to, um, uh, the company that, uh, our review committee selected and is recommending to you as, uh, as a, as a council, that's what's on the agenda tonight, but like, uh, Eric to take a few minutes to introduce himself and to talk very briefly about what you'll be doing.
Thank you, Mr. Evans, uh, Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Attorney, and Clerk. Thank you and welcome, uh, I felt welcomed here when we came to our interview. Uh, I was greatly impressed by the professionalism and the dedication of your staff, you're off to a great start. We see our role to supplement the great work that's already begun, to get you to the finish line, get these grants, get some money flowing in, uh, we understand, I met with Sandra just a minute or two before the meeting here, and she's had a great start. Uh, we see our role as augmenting your staff effort, uh, providing some subject matter expertise and bringing you a great team. Two of the guys are hired away from FEMA, are senior public assistance coordinators from FEMA, the other guy who'll be here is a thirty-year public works director for the City of Jackson, Mississippi, he's been through a lot of storms, understands this very well. Uh, we have some financial consulting with a group from Boston who helps us all over the country administer these, and our goal is to move some money through your system as quickly as we can, so that, uh, the next city audit, uh, that in the next fiscal year you can show that on your balance sheet, uh, and I'll be happy to answer any quick questions if you have any, if not, I look forward to meeting with you. We will keep city manager informed on a monthly basis, so at your regular scheduled meetings, he will have facts and figures and numbers and how this will, um, proceed, and we know that, uh, look forward to working with you in the months to come.
I have a question.
Sure.
I noticed that your company is out of, um, Austin, will there be representatives here in Aransas Pass?
Yes, we're here, they're, they're here.
All the time or just frequently?
As much as needed.
Frequently, okay.
We're very close, we want to save, uh, you know, the, the expense of travel and being here in hotel and that sort of thing, is reimbursable by FEMA, but we want to keep it to a minimum. Uh, there's, FEMA uses a calculation called direct administrative cost, and it's a percentage of your total project cost, you guys are between twenty-two, twenty-five million right now out in projects, five percent DAC, direct administrative cost is four, five hundred thousand once you, you know, plus or minus expenses, so you have a, plenty of reservoir to get this work done on a reimbursable basis, and we'll keep a, a burn rate calculator, so every month you see where we are against that five percent, uh, direct administrative cost, so there won't be any, uh, question about that, but we're a phone call away, three hours down the road, I just made it out, it's an easy drive.
And charges for every phone call we make to you?
No, we don't. FEMA, FEMA, we do, but not you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we, um, award the request for proposal for disaster recovery consulting services to H2O.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor and Council, next item is a, um, an issue I want to bring to you, and that's a backup proposal, in case there's some things that aren't, uh, reimbursable, want to, uh, In case there are some things that aren't reimbursable, want to be able to pursue other grant possibilities that might be out there and want to have the flexibility, which would need your approval to do so, to pursue other grants that are out there that, again, that might not be reimbursable. And we want to see what our options are there, like any match dollars we might need, something of that sort. Don't know that I'd be acting on this quickly, but if I do want to be ready to go with it, if you're okay as far as pursuing other companies, which has to come back to you, of course, but want to have this as standby in case additional assistance as far as grants, as far as, as far as a match dollars are needed. So that's the reason for this. It's a safety issue.
Well, I make the motion that we approve the city manager going out for requests for proposals for possible grant administration.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor and Council, this next item is Hotel Tax Advisory Committee proposal. This was discussed at a recent work session, and in essence, what is being proposed is right now, after you set aside what goes to chamber, there's a certain amount that goes into, or goes to different organizations that may want to hold events, and those events come, they fill out an application, they come to us, and then they go directly to you. Sometimes there's not time to do the necessary vetting for requests for dollars for those hotel motel dollars. This committee will do that, and this committee will also make clear to the applying organizations what they're eligible for and what they can do, can't do. They'll help in that regard also. But it is setting up a citizens committee to do the necessary investigative work for you, so that when they recommend to you, because you still have to be the final approving body, when they recommend that Organization X should receive five thousand dollars for this particular event, all of that's been researched, and the event as well as the organization, make sure you're comfortable with that organization, excuse me, and that event also. That's the purpose in this committee, if you agree. And again, this was talked about at the, at a recent work session.
The only thing I would like to see added to that, that we, in Isla Marada that we did, when we gave out hot tax funds, at the end, they had so many days to give us the receipts for all their advertising and stuff. You know, you can say you can do whatever you want, but showing where your dollars really went is very important to the money that went out.
And that's an excellent point, because that should be done anyway with public dollars. You're absolutely correct, and we'll make that a part of the process as far as being accountable for the dollars that, and that's a normal procedure, quite frankly, and making sure that you will hear how those dollars were spent, and that's perfectly understandable and be happy to do that.
Okay. Anybody else?
Well, I make a motion that we do a hotel motel tax advisory committee.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Mayor and Council, this next item is the bid for repairs for the fishing pier at Harbor Point Park. Chuck is here, the harbor master, and can give you, can give you details. We've been waiting for this for a long time, quite frankly, and that's a very popular feature we have out there. The pier are now ready to begin making repairs, so people can actually go out there and fish or whatever. Chuck, you want to give the details?
Thank you, Gary. Mayor and Council, I'm pleased to let you know the operations at the harbor are almost back to normal, almost. We have no sunken boats in the harbor. The sonar survey that was done showed no underwater sunken boats that we were unaware of. There's some debris, but it's not shallow enough to pose any dangers to anything. We've made progress on our sea grass mitigation issue. I hope to have that final resolution before you very shortly. We finally got in three bids on repairing the fishing pier, which was severely damaged and has been shut since the hurricane. The handrails, the safety rails, the deck boards were badly damaged, and worse of all, the three-by-twelve inch, three-inch-by-twelve inch stringers along the side that support the deck boards, a number of those are split. Of the three bids that we, we got, asked for four bids. Smart Docs, Marvin Smart's company, is so busy, he just can't get to us. Hart Bar Construction, a new company formed out of Rockport, was the high bid. J.J. Fox, a minor correction to the bid amount of ten-six here. I was informed the day before yesterday, after the agenda was prepared, it's now ten-eight plus four thousand if they have to replace the cross bolts in the pilings, which they recommend. There's twenty-four three-quarter inch galvanized bolts, and the other companies were going to look at those and determine if any of them needed replaced, they would include it for the bid price. The low bid was offered by Brent Felman with Dock Express out of Rockport at eight thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. I recommend that bid for your consideration.
How long has Dock Express been in business? Do you know?
Close to twenty years.
Okay.
Very long time.
And I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Doesn't Dock Express do most of the dockage repair at San Pat Navigation District?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
They did that. They've done quite a bit of work now up in Key Allegro.
Right.
And Sommet Cove Harbor, I think, but they did quite a bit at Key Allegro.
And they have agreed that this will include everything, the eighty-three fifty?
Yes, ma'am.
How long will it take?
Once they can get to us, and they have to fit our job into their work schedule, which may take two, three, four weeks, but he said about three and a half days from start to completion.
Oh, okay. Wow.
Okay. I have a question, Adam. Is there looking at the lights out in the harbor? Are they, how are they in that particular?
The lights will, I hope, come before you at the next council meeting, since there are lights on the fishing pier that have been broken off of their mounts, and most of them are still underwater. We've got to fix the pier before we can repair the lights, and we'll do that all at once, including the lights that are on land. I have three companies that have bid on that, on the light repair, but they kind of bid apples against oranges, and I've asked them to reconsider on some common specifics, so we can make a fair comparison.
Okay.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we award the bid to repair the fishing pier at ConBran Harbor to Dock Express.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm going to turn this next item, it's a legal discussion. I want to turn it over to our city attorney to talk about her recommendation related to AEP. Roxanne?
Mayor and City Council, every single year, the gas companies and the utility electric companies want to increase our rates. I know that's a shock. In preparation for increasing their rates, they have to file their application to increase their rates with the Public Utility Commission of Texas, and when they file that, cities are then given the opportunity to protest the increase. The city, cities generally collectively get together, and they hire the same law firm every year named Lloyd Goslink out of Austin, Texas, to represent the cities and to negotiate the rate to be lower than the increased applied rate. That's that time of year again, and so AEP is wanting to increase the electric rates for the service area, and they've submitted their application to PUC, and Lloyd Goslink is asking the city of Aransas Pass, do you want us to represent you? I'm not part of Lloyd Goslink, but does the law firm want, you want the law firm to represent you to try to negotiate the rates down? The cost for Lloyd Goslink is not charged to the city. Believe it or not, AEP has to pay that bill. So your only decision is whether or not you want Lloyd Goslink to represent you to lower the rate. It will not come out of your city funding.
So what's the negative?
So, I was gonna say, what do you, and your recommendation is?
That's a very good point. My recommendation is that we do hire Lloyd Goslink to represent us. If we do not protest the rate, we're subject to being charged the higher rate, and Lloyd Goslink has had an established relationship with being able to negotiate those rate down. And so if we participate in the protests and they're able to negotiate the rate down, we get that lower rate. If we don't participate, there's the risk that we're on the higher rate. So there's really nothing to lose in participating, we just need the authority to do so. So the city attorney recommends that you go ahead and approve Lloyd Goslink representing you to try to decrease, negotiate the electric bill rates.
Well, I'll make a motion that we hire Lloyd Goslink to negotiate our AEP rates.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll have to abstain, since my husband works, I mean, I agree with y'all, but my husband works for AEP, so I just need to, I go either way. I don't want to get in trouble.
Just for clarification, it's Approval Resolution Number 2018-858, as submitted to the City Council?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, now we go to community enrichment. Cheryl?
Mayor and Council, we do get a requ, we did get a request for the use of our Aquatic Center for Project Graduation that will happen on June first, that is graduation night, from twelve o'clock to, well, midnight to three AM, so I guess it's really the second, because it's from midnight to three. It is something that they've done every year. I did put in the agenda, in the agenda memo, the cost that is to the city. I do believe we have a representative, and so if you have any questions about that, I will be happy to answer them. My only concern really right now with that request is the lighting. We might not be a hundred percent with our pool lights at the time of June first. That's normally not an issue, because it's daylight when we're open, but with this particular request, lighting could be an issue, so there's an added expense with some possible portable lighting we can use to accommodate the request. However, those haven't been tested, and I just don't know if it's gonna light up the pool enough, but that's all in there. We do have somebody from the group here, Cynthia, and I think she, there's a letter to support this agenda packet, and you can talk to her, and if you have any questions, I'll answer them as well.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Cynthia Voskis. I'm the board secretary for Aransas Pass Project Graduation. We're a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization. We did request the use of the pool. After reading the letter preparing for the meeting, we only have, we'll have no more than eighty students, so that's gonna change some of your costing information, and I don't know if you, I guess you'd say whether we can vote if, or they can vote if that changes on her memo, but, so that was one of the things. It's gonna be eighty student, no more than eighty students, if this is something that can be done. If the lights are an issue or gonna cause some type of hazard or risk to the employees, then we're gonna understand, and we're just gonna pray to God, and he'll give us something else for our graduating seniors to do that evening. One of the other things that was requested on the same letter, and so I'm, once again, I'm just, I don't know if y'all are gonna want to table this and wait until the next meeting, is we had requested, normally, it'll be four years that I moved here, and ever since I've lived here, I volunteered with this organization, and normally, the police department provides us with a police officer for the whole night. That was something else that was requested, in addition to a financial, some type of financial donation, if that's something the city's able to do. It's been a rough year fundraising for these kids with the hurricane and local businesses who were severely damaged and continuing, you know, losses, displaced families and all that. So I guess I'll leave it to everybody else to decide if it's table to the next meeting.
I guess my concern is the lighting of the pool.
Can we get portable lights?
Well, that's what we were talking about.
Okay, so we do, the Public Works does have two sets, two portable lights. They are on kind of a trailer, and they are a thousand, there's, they each have four thousand bulb, yeah, lot bulbs in them, but those would have to be parked on the outside of the aquatic center, so we just haven't tested that yet. So I don't know if that's gonna provide enough light in the middle of the night so that the lifeguards can safely see the pool deck. We do have lights in the pool that work currently.
Oh, there are.
But it's just with that amount of swimmers, they have to be able to see, you know, for it to be safe, to be able to see.
What's, what is the cost if we were to, the city go out and rent? Like, you know, they do sometimes.
Well, the city has them, so I did put a cost in.
If that's not enough, would that be, is there a possibility of that? Because, I mean, I would, I would hate for us not to be able to grant this request for the seniors, you know, what we can do on that, on that end. Can we look at what a cost would be?
We could definitely look, I mean, I, I don't, I would think that those lights, they're like the ones we use from Shrimpery, y'all have seen them up, I just didn't remember, like, you know, I haven't seen them, I haven't seen them in that exact situation, but they're just gonna be on the outside, so it would probably be adequate. If not, I do believe, instead of renting them, the police department has some that are older. I haven't touched base with them about those as well.
I think with all these unanswered questions that we have, I think it's best for us to table it for the, for the next meeting and...
Let me, let me get this real clear. So the pool lights inside the pool work?
Work, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so inside the water, the pool can be seen?
Yes, you can see the bottom of the pool.
Okay, I have a large pool at my home, I understand the pool lighting.
Absolutely.
So the portable lights that you're talking about are only gonna light up the grounds, the walkways?
Exactly.
And you've got two large portables?
Yes, two large portables. That we can put, but on the outside, we can't put them on the actual pool deck, we have to put them kind of on...
I, I, well, my knowledge is those are going to be adequate lighting.
We use those portable lights for Rock to Dock.
I just, I haven't seen it yet, so I didn't know, I just put on there that that's how many wattages they are, so, you know, I would guess that it, you know, I'm...
Oh, it's more than sufficient, if, as long as the portable lights were, are working.
So?
Would we be able to have the police officer there?
That's the other question, okay.
Okay.
We do every year.
Okay. So I make a motion that we grant the Aransas Pass Project Graduation the use of the Aquatic Center and the police presence at the function on June first.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Y'all be safe.
And then for the next agenda, could I request to be placed on there for request for donation of funds, if there's any availability of funds?
Mr. Mayor and Council, would love to do that, but right now, we've been cutting back significantly, significantly during the year. Our fund balance is still, as of today, not where it needs to be, even with all of our cutbacks. It's gonna be very difficult with the current budget situation, which has gone on for a while, on funding. It's a budgetary issue as all.
I understand.
Otherwise, it would be wonderful to do, but the budgetary challenges, that's staff's recommendation, at least from the city manager, and I don't know about the finance director, but the recommendation makes it very hard to do that.
I just wish, you know, as far as kind of going out through Facebook or something for businesses that are, or individuals to donate and...
And we've done that, so we're at our halfway mark, and like I said, we're gonna, we're gonna get resourceful.
So how much has, have y'all...
We're at ten thousand.
You're at ten thousand now.
And we usually work with about eighteen to twenty thousand.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This next item before you is, excuse me, a petition by Mr. Bruce Furlough to abandon a portion of North Houston Street. The portion that is being requested to be abandoned is landlocked. It was, it appears as though whenever the adjoining portions of North Houston were abandoned, this one was not. Mr. Furlough and his family own the lots around, surrounding it. He understands that if the council is to grant... He understands that if the council is to grant, grants the petition, a title search will need to be done to determine whether or not the council will sell the, the property through the normal procurement or normal process, or whether or not it would revert to him as the adjoining landowner. The deed of conveyance would be needed for that. But Mr. Furlough is here?
Handout.
Okay. Yes, sir, here.
Anyway, my name, hello, hello, is Bruce Furlough. I'm a real estate, licensed real estate agent and a real estate investor from Port Aransas, so I'm a neighbor. And we're here to talk about a little piece of property up on the north edge of town. The nearest landmark is like the Mexican Cafe at the corner of North Commercial and Giles Street in that vicinity. If you look, if I can manage to juggle all this, but. And I do have a cover sheet that pretty much summarizes everything I'm gonna say that you can refer to, but the first sheet that I might refer you to is this one that has all the little figures on it. That's a copy of the Aransas County Appraisal District's master map showing all the properties that are actually privately owned, and they have identification numbers. And you will see that the little area we're talking about is outlined in yellow. It has no such number, which indicates that it's never been rendered for taxation. So we're satisfied that it does belong to the city on that basis and not to someone else, because if you look at the following sheet and see where the, see where the property is, a couple of things point out on the, on the left corner of this sheet, you can see where Houston Street dead ends now. That's currently the end of Houston Street, and it's a 50-foot right away, but apparently in the old days, they were ambitious, they had 100-foot rightaways. And this little segment is kind of sitting out in the middle of the area between Houston Street and Giles Street, but it's obvious that at one time, this right away went all the way across this entire area. But it has in the past been sold or deeded to private ownership, all except this little piece here, and that's what we're talking about here this evening. If you look at the heavy black line that goes all the way around this, that outlines the property that we currently own in this area. We have between 11 and 12 acres here, a lot of it fronting on the highway and Giles Street. And we are contiguous to this piece of property on what amounts to three and a half sides of it. So we would be the natural owners of this if it goes into private ownership, clearly. But we don't want you to give it to us, we're gonna pay you for it. So we will be submitting a contract to purchase this piece of property. And the, the interest that we have here, we, just quickly, we got interested as investors in this area back in 2007 and '08, when there was a master plan to develop Con Brown Harbor into something really, really wonderful. And we thought, that's gonna generate a lot of interest in this area, and people are gonna wanna have second homes, and they're gonna want a place to keep their boats, and it's gonna happen, but it's, we're, we're in it for the long haul. So we wanna, we wanna eventually build a development out there that'll be something you can take pride in, and that will boost your tax base considerably. And as an aside, when we purchase this little piece, it will go on the tax rolls, so you'll be getting whatever we can agree to with the county appraisal district, you know how that goes. So what we wanna do then is go ahead and submit an earnest money contract to purchase this, and I'll try to explain to you how we came up with the, now they have one official copy, you may wanna give it to the mayor or the manager, but anyway, in looking at this plot, there is a, a piece of property directly west of the subject property that's got a big Roman nubel one written on it, if you can find that. That little piece of property is very similar to this property in that it's totally landlocked, has no utilities, there's no way to get to it without trespassing, unless, like, we are, you own property, it's contiguous and can reach a street and where the utilities are. So we can get to it, but nobody else basically could. We bought that piece of property in 2016 for $5,000, and using the comforting market analysis that, that we do in real estate, you find similar properties that have sold near this property that's in question, and you make whatever adjustments are necessary. But in this case, it's almost a perfect comparable sale. It's got the same hickies, it's about the same size, so we're offering to you for this property what we paid for that property, $5,000. And the contract is a very straightforward, it's cash contract, you won't have any cost, we'll pay for the survey, we'll pay for the, for the title company to do the title search, issue the title commitment. We have a 21-day option period to investigate the ownership and to get the surveys done and make sure everybody's happy. And then it calls for a 60-day closing. I predict we can do it in 45 days, or maybe even quicker. It's a very simple transaction. So we'd like to buy this property and, and put it on the tax rolls and, and just someday make something you'll be proud of.
If there's any questions?
And the, the agenda item this evening, and I'll defer the city attorney if I, if I mess this up, is just the petition to abandon the right of way. In order for the sale of the property to go before council, they have to first grant the petition, and then we have to go through the process of doing public notice for sale. If the deed of conveyance determines that it has to be sold at fair market value, there is the possibility that it could simply revert to the adjoining owner, which would be Mr. Furlough. So, but that would have to go on another agenda.
The contract doesn't have any dates, it starts when, when you sign it, so take your time. We just wanna hurry up and arrange the process.
On a legal perspective, I would ask that we return this check.
Yes.
And if we accept his, his offer, if he should submit the offer when it is publicized.
Well, we are required to submit payment to do an option contract to the build, the commission requires that, so that's what that check already says deposit. But if you don't want it, we'll give you another one when it's posted.
That would be appropriate.
But staff does recommend approval for the abandonment of this portion of North Houston.
Can I make a comment? Am I able to make a comment?
That's in the full description of the mayor, who's in charge of the city.
Sure, go ahead.
Roy Voskis, 1003 West Rhodes Avenue. I just wanna make sure, and a city planner here has looked it up, has recommended, but I've lived here for about four years, and there's been a couple of abandonments of rightaways and whatnot, I just wanna make sure that everything's been looked at, because I've had a chance to look at the zoning map in the past, you look at an aerial photo of the town, in the west-south portion of the R7A district, you got like two dead spots there where there's no houses. And I can tell you, and I'm not an expert, but a, a good portion of that reason is because they abandoned the west-to-east roads, and now, you know, you can't get through there anymore. And the, the length from point A to point B to hit a sewer line, pump station, not pump station, lift station or something like that, is, is, it's not gonna happen. You know, somebody would have to put some serious dollars to build there. And I just don't want that to start happening on the north part of town, since we're looking to expand to the north as a whole. So I just wanna make sure you all really look at this and make sure, hey, you know what, it's not gonna happen here on this north portion of Houston or something to that effect. That's all I'm saying.
That is a good point. In the past, there has been some remiss neglect, there has been some issues with rightway abandonments. This portion of Houston is a small portion that simply, it looks like whenever the adjoining portions were not abandoned, that this one was, was not included in the, the meets and bounds for the abandonment. So this is.
Yeah, it just, it wasn't shown on the screen, so I have no idea. That's fine, that's fine, like I said.
Yeah, it's a, it's a 110-foot wide, and it is only about, at the, at the longest portion of it, it's 175 feet long. And it's about 100 feet on the other side, it's a bit of a trapezoid.
I make a motion to grant the petition of Bruce Furlough to abandon a portion of North Houston Street.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Can't wait to see it.
There you go.
The next item is a, another floodplain variance request. This one is going to be done, is requested similarly to the one previously granted by council as a functional necessity, but the, the location would have functional dependency on its location of the water. It is for 420 Bigelow, is for Grant Erickson, the request is by Grant Erickson for Erickson and Jensen Shrimp Company. As you'll see in the agenda memo, the, after Mr. Erickson got the elevation certificate, we found that it is about a few inches short, shy of being able to do the FEMA certified three-foot of dry floodproofing. And it would then kick in the elevation requirement. In order for us to proceed with permitting for either dry floodproofing or wet floodproofing, we would need first to have a variance granted, just to be in compliance. So this is, the, the request is, I'm sure y'all are familiar with Mr. Erickson's shrimping company operations, the way that the shrimp is brought in, if they were to elevate the building, it would be.
A nightmare.
Yes, yes, it would, it would not be feasible for the business to continue. And so there, the details are in the memo, are there any, any questions specific to?
Okay, so this is stating that his building needs to come up a certain level, correct?
It's, it states, what the elevation certificate shows is that he is just a few, if, if he was gonna do the dry floodproofing, FEMA will only certify up to three feet. But the, in order for him to get to the city's required elevation, he would have to go three feet and about almost three inches.
Okay.
Those three inches could be considered negligible, since it's city-owned property, we do wanna go through the formal red tape process. And we wanna be sure that, before we proceed with permitting, that we have gone to council, gotten variance, and so we can move forward.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the variance for Grant Erickson seafood floodplain regulations at 420 Bigelow Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mary, I have to abstain, because he's our owner developer.
And then one last item. This one is a, just a perfunctory step. We are a state, we are a, have adopted the Aransas County Hazard Mitigation Action Plan. As an adopting body, whenever a change is made to the document as a whole, it'll come before y'all in order for it, the updated version to be adopted and approved. They have added an annex to the Hazard Mitigation Plan for Aransas County in order to allow the Aransas County Navigation District to apply for mitigative funding. This will not impact our mitigative actions or our listed hazards in the, the Hazard Mitigation Action Plan at all. All this is, is the City Council of Aransas Pass approving and supporting the annex that has the, that the Aransas County Navigation District is adopting in order to participate in the mitigation program.
So this is basically just like a housekeeping kind of?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I will make a motion that we.
No, go, go right ahead, I was trying to read it, no, no, go right ahead.
I will make a motion that we approve resolution 2018-859, supporting the Aransas County Navigation District's request to annex the Aransas County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And we go to public safety, Mr. Erickson.
Thank you, mayor and council. This is an item that was tabled from the last council meeting on allowing the police department to accept a rifle donation from Southern Methodist University Police Department. This would be for 11 short-barreled AR-15 rifles and five standard-length barrel rifles. There was some discussion last go-around, and I did follow up with the council with information, and if there are any questions or concerns, I'd like to discuss them.
I just think we need to be proactive and not reactive. I agree with this.
I make a motion that we approve the rifle transfer from Southern Methodist University Police Department to the Aransas Pass Police Department.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item for public safety, I'm gonna let the, our new fire chief, not so new anymore, but Chief Kelly will present.
So this is a consider and approve for the, for me to be able to receive a transfer of laptops, computers from Gulf South Pipeline Company. They reached out to us and several fire departments wanting to donate laptops to us and other departments.
Well, I'll make a motion we approve the transfer of laptop computers from Gulf South Pipeline Company to the Aransas Pass Fire Department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, under staff announcements, want to let you know that there is need for a meeting a week from tonight, actually, two meetings, a work session and then a special meeting also, so, which often happens in that second meeting, the second Monday of the month. So one is scheduled as of this moment for, for a week from tonight. The other issue is a reminder, and you may have a flyer in front of you, a city cleanup day on May 12th, that's coming up, and that's simply a reminder, and wanted to state that publicly also. So those are the two items that staff has, Mr. Mayor.
I just wanted to let y'all know and to let our, our residents know, next week, on Wednesday, May 16th, we will be having an open house at the Civic Center for residents who are gonna be impacted by the new update of flood maps. The open house will be held from 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. And that morning, for any professionals like surveyors, realtors, insurance agents, contractors, there will be a workshop that the FEMA and FIP representatives will be there to answer any questions and to give any direction that might be needed. But, so that'll be Wednesday, May 16th, at the Civic Center, workshop in the morning, 10 to noon, and then the open house, 2 to 7:00. Thank you.
Are you gonna send out a notice on that, so we can all kinda get that to everybody?
Yes, yes, and it's, it'll be in the newspaper Wednesday, and it has been, we've printed up the flyers, I sent out the email to staff, and so we're trying to get the work. trying to get the word out. And so, if you know of anyone who needs further information, if you know of anyone that may not be able to attend it, that would have questions, please feel free to give them my contact information, and we'll get it, get it to them.
And it was in the newsletter also?
I knew it was in the newsletter.
Anything else? So, are we going to start getting a raise for coming out here every Monday?
To $2.00 a year?
A hundred percent over what you're getting now.
I'm just kidding. Now, that was six years out there, we getting a box of cigars.
Now, we go to citizen comments. Citizen comments are intended for matters that are not scheduled on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes and state your name and address for the record. Be advised that the Texas Open Meeting Act prohibits the city council from responding and discussing your comments. The law authorizes the following. Make a statement of factual information, recite existing policies, advise that this subject may be placed on the agenda for the subsequent meeting.
My name is Maria Morales. I live at 405 North Whitney in Aransas County. My agenda tonight is the removing of posts on my neighbors on 357 North Whitney. I've lived in this area since 64 years now. These neighbors have moved in, isn't it, with my girlfriend? And she, on May the 7th, I'm sorry, March the 7th, I went to MD Anderson, came back to find posts that were posted both in the property past the city storm drain, which is on picture one. You'll see the post. And then, on May, I called the code enforcer, he came by, said they were going to check it out. The building inspector allowed them to put private property on those posts. I had already done, at one point, we had asked this gentleman over here, Roy Voskas, he came out, she apparently came out, he told her it was private property, and that it belonged to her, it was abandoned property. I did my investigation, I called the appraisal district, I called the county tax office. It belonged to the city of Aransas Pass. They told me it's up to you to see if the city has abandoned the property. According to Mr. Voskas, it had. According to the appraisal district, it still belonged to the city of Aransas Pass. I come back on April, on March the 24th, because I took my boyfriend back to MD Anderson for surgery. We left on the 19th, came back on the 24th, she had put two more posts on the side of the property, cemented in. She put ropes on the top, and she put wire on the bottom. On April the 5th, Fernando Quintanilla came out, he looked at her, told her it was city property for her to remove the posts, nothing was done. The only thing she removed was a wire on the bottom. If you lived in that property, put yourself in my place, you've lived 64 years, you've let your grandchildren and children and your neighbor's children play on that empty lot, for all of a sudden, for somebody to move in and to put private property posts and ropes on there. Every one of my neighbors has asked me to start a petition against the city of Aransas Pass. They're willing to write letters, but I wanted to come and make my presentation. I spoke to the mayor, he came out and saw it, he said, yes, it is city property, we'll have it taken down. Up to this day, nothing's done. The lady comes, she comes in the afternoon, she's not living there, her boyfriend is, he stays there. She only comes in the afternoon when she knows I'm about to get off from schoolwork. She stays there from 5:00 to 11:00 o'clock, because we started seeing what she was doing, and she leaves. But she, every afternoon, I drive up, I ignore her, because she walks the dog up to the front. My son said, she's got all the property in the back, why is she mocking us? I said, just ignore her. We will take care of this properly. I've been a citizen, I've never bothered anybody, and if I've done anything wrong, was only to report that every time he pulls out his weeds, he piles them in the alleyway or throws them against the apartment complex in the back, so that they can mow it down. The neighbor across him is the same, is another illegal immigrant, I reported him to Cory. I said, look, every time they barbecue, they throw their, their stuff, leftover charcoal down in the drain. And if you go look down the drain, you'll see, you'll see where he threw cement with water down that same drain. I said, I'm only looking out for my property, and, you know, I think this needs to be taken care of.
My understanding is it was taken care of, so yes, we will, but I think the chief has some comments also.
Yeah, this is just my first opportunity hearing, but it sounds like this is going to fall under my purview, and I'd like an opportunity to address it. If you could stick around, when they go to closed session, I'd like to get more information from you. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay. Can you advise us on the foot, the matter? Please, give us a follow-up on that. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, city manager. My name is Steve Pham, and I'm the owner of the Captain Bates Shack, located here in Con Brown Harbor. We've been in this business for, coming out on five years, and we don't make a whole lot of money in that area. I mean, but we've been recognized a lot by, from people from San Antonio, Austin, Corpus Christi, all the way down to Foothill, Texas. And we're the only business, are very active in that harbor, year-round. And we draw a lot of people down to that harbor. We make that harbor alive during the winter time. Anyway, I want to come here and tell you all, on my behalf and the public, to know what I had done to that seawall, which is not mine, it's belonged to the city. And I had problems, since I first started renting that property, which is five years ago, it was cracking already, until every year it started getting bigger and bigger. And 2017, on July 15, on June 15, I asked Chuck, the harbor master, Chuck West, and that's when the city council previously sent him, grant him the permission to help take care of me, what I need in that harbor. But I came to him and asked, and he just shook his head, he can't help me. If I, he do help me, he gonna help everybody in that harbor. And that seawall is failing already, halfway down. Until August 25th, 2017, Harvey came, the whole wall fell. My building is like two foot in the water. The erosion took half of the, a third of the soil underneath that building. And I live in fear every morning, come out there, seeing what happened. I feeling like city gonna abandon me, he gonna pull the contract on me and kick me out. So, I was desperately find a way to, to help save that business, which I already invested so much money in there from the beginning. I just need to hang around to get my money back. But anyway, luckily, SBA is around. So, I put my home in, that's Calero, a little amount they loaned me, I just have certain limit on the repair. I can't do a full repair, like what they were trying to do the full repair, 250,000, that's too much. I can't handle that. So, little amount I can afford to repair. I go step by step, as the city wanted me to do all the procedure, the city want me to do. I go through a department army core engineer to get their approval, and I go to Stuart Lynn, the engineer, to get their seal on the approval. And until today, I got that wall fixed. And it's like six months now. So, I did do a little modification according to that print I drew. It's, it's easy to estimate what happened outside of the water. But when I get into the project and looks underneath that water, there's a 10-foot sinkhole, which is down there, and the wall that fell over, it broken up in five different pieces. And it's very jagged down there, where I cannot lay in a quick sack, like a wall coming up. So, I've been doing a lot of research, looking around the bypass and the Port Aransas Charity, which is engineered by the great state of Texas engineer, and I decided to go with the riffraff. And, and I go with the riffraff, like harbor master also recommend me put cross riffraff, and it works just as well.
Can you take that one, too?
Yes. In fact, at the staff level, we have started already. Steve's a good person to work with, and he's a good person to work with. But we want to make sure what the permit, and I've talked with Cat about this also, we want to make sure what the permit, what was submitted to us, matches up with the work. If not, and I've indicated this to Steve also, if not, then what is the reason? So, we are working on it, and Steve makes a good point, but we, we have to do our due diligence also, as it relates to the improvements that were made.
Yes, I, according to the plan, the plan that engineer was sealed on there, I have a concrete sack, which I'm going to stack up. But when I found out the debris's on the bottom, I cannot stack 10-foot high out of creek sack without getting it buckle into the bay. So, I stopped there, and I had to re-modification by upgrading it into a riffraff pattern, and it held up good. It, it, I had a six-month now, repair now, and it's still like the first day I put it together.
Steve is, Mr. Mayor, Steve is bringing up some different issues I'm not aware of related to that, but all the more reason we want to get a third independent party, not staff, to look at it. I think I've indicated that to you in the email.
That's right.
So, we will get it addressed, but there's some steps that we need to follow to make sure we're doing our due diligence in this also. But Steve makes some good points there that we are...
Yes, I, I don't ask for anything, I just want to be fair. You know, just like you move in somebody's houses, you, you gotta go obey by their contract, you gotta keep their floor and their premises clean. But how you gonna keep it clean if you got a leaked roof? So, that roof is not mine, and I'm willing to put half of it repaired in it. And I'm just asking for a fair, you know, that's all I'm asking.
Okay.
I would like to commend Steve for all of the efforts and the work that he has done and the research that you have done. And everything that you have done down there is, is to be commended. You've done a great job.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate what the city gave me, an offer to do a business down there.
Thank you. You need this back?
Yes.
Okay.
We're only temporary reading.
Working on his budget now.
I understand.
Thank you, Steve.
Anybody else?
I'm Donald Brum, living 902 South Right. I've complained about, when we get a three-inch rain, McClung Street floods. And from where my drainpipe is, it goes across Wright Street, about 20-foot back, the water stops right there. Water don't run uphill. I've talked to the street department several times, and they come out and they wash that pipe out, but washing the pipe out with dirt is not going to make that water run uphill. I know they're either going to have to fill that dirt in or lower the drainpipe. Every time it gets three inches rain, I get two inches of water in my garage. And I would like something done about it, if possible. Thank you.
Sure.
Now, we're going to go to executive session. The city council may recess into executive session to discuss the following items pursuant to Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. Section 5551, 071 of the Texas Open Meeting Act, to meet with the attorney to seek legal advice on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the city council, under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas, clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meeting Act relating to the city of Aransas Pass versus J.M. Davis's LTD RLI Insurance Company and Naismith Engineering, cost number S14-6278-CV-C in the 343 Third Judicial District Court in San Patricia County, Texas. Second is Naismith Engineering Incorporated versus Sylvia Carrillo and Adon Chapa, cost number 2014-CCV-60566-4 in Oasis County Court, number four. Then we have Daniel Jimenez and Paul Harrison versus the city of Aransas Pass, cost number Johnny Lee Davis versus the city of Aransas Pass, Eric Blanchard, Kyle Rhodes, and Leo Martinez, cost number 13-17-00455-CV in the 13th District Court of Appeals of Texas. Number five, Natalia Namos versus the city of Aransas Pass, in the Board of Judgments of the city of Aransas Pass, Texas, cost number S-16-5735-CV-C in the 343rd Judicial District of the San Patricia County, Texas. Number six, voluntary annexation of Motel 6, 2705 West Wheeler Avenue in Aransas Pass, Texas. Number seven, tax abatement agreement with Fairfield Inn and Suites by Marriott at 2679 Texas 35 Business, Aransas Pass, Texas. Then we're going to go to Section 551 dot point 072, deliberations regarding real property related to LWR. Then we're going to go to Section 551 dot 087, deliberations regarding economic development negotiation related to Con Brown Harbor.